We're good to go. Okay. Good evening. Okay. Okay, here we go. Good evening. Welcome to the town of Emmitsburg meeting, town meeting for Monday, March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. At this time, I'll ask folks to please turn their phones off or turn them to silent in respect to the decorum of the meeting. With that in mind, I will also ask that we please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Checking myself here. Goodness gracious. Okay. Okay, so with that in mind, um, future meetings will include the planning commission, which will meet here on Monday, March twenty-seventh. At seven P M. This will be here in the town office again and via Zoom. The board of commissioners will next meet on April third at seven P M. And again, that will be here in the town office and available via Zoom. Okay, we now turn to the minutes for our February sixth, two thousand twenty-three meeting. Does anybody have any modifications or changes they want to see related to that?
I have none, just a comment. I know a few, few weeks ago. I had some questions regarding Ms. King's minutes and I already sent her an email and Miss Wells, but I just want to make a public announcement that I think the minutes have been looking great. So thank you.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the minutes for the February sixth, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-three meeting as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second for Mr. Ritz's motion?
Second.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Commissioner Ritz, second by Commissioner Pollitt, Bowman Pollitt, sorry. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nobody against? Motion carries five to zero. Deputy, we now turn to you for the police report, please. Good evening. Thank you for being here.
Good evening. Yeah, all right. So for February twenty twenty-three, those two of us in town, we used two days holiday annual leave. Um, only training and stuff was just the axon online training because we were assigned body worn cameras now. Uh, fleet issues. Um, there was a minor departmental accident. Um, nothing major. Deputy Honaker was assigned a new, a newer unmarked vehicle and myself was assigned a newer marked vehicle. For calls of service, two hundred and sixty-one total calls for service, including eight arrests, one hundred and ten traffic stops. Calls worth highlighting was earlier in the February of vehicle theft from Valero, traffic stop initiated and ended the rudders with a subject taken into custody. That concludes it. Any questions?
Any questions for the deputy? Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. We now turn to the town manager's report.
Good evening. This is the town manager's report for January of two thousand twenty-three. I'll highlight some key areas. Before I get got, get started, I'd like to just let everybody know that the town is going to sponsor Earth Day event this year. It'll be behind the town office from twelve to two P M. It's Saturday, April twenty-second. There'll be kids planting activities, ice cream, food and DJ and a whole lot of fun. So please come out. And I think Commissioner Bowman-Pallott also have an event to announce in conjunction with that. Yep. Uh, okay, so highlights areas in the streets. Um, staff assisted the parking enforcement officer with parking meter money collection. Staff took down most of the Christmas decorations and cold patched some potholes around town. Related to the park, uh, the contractor removed some hazardous trees in Emmett Gardens. Staff took took down some trees at, uh, near the stockpile. And the contractor completed the Silo Hill Park Upgrade Project. We are just waiting on the basketball court to be installed. Related to water, Rainbow Lake is currently at the spill up spillway level of sixteen point six feet. Roughing filters are being back backwashed twice a day. We produced an average of two hundred and thirty-five thousand eight hundred ninety-three gallons per day in January and consumed an average of two hundred and fifty-one thousand two hundred and fourteen. Which amount then, which meant the amount of backwash water in the month of January was approximately fourteen point five eight percent. We purchased four hundred and sixty gallons, four hundred and sixty thousand gallons of water from Mount St. Mary's. Related to wastewater, we treated an average of four hundred and sixty-five thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven gallons per day and again consumed roughly two hundred and fifty-one thousand. Which meant that forty-six point oh seven percent of the wild, our wastewater treated that month was wild water. We had no spills of untreated sewage in the month of January and we exceeded this plant's design capacity one time on January twenty-fifth. We received about two point seven inches of precipitation. We currently have a surplus or at the end of January, we had a surplus of one point eight six inches over the last six months. Trash pickup will remain Mondays in the month of March. There I listed. Some of the meetings I attended in January, some noteworthy items in staff completed the December twenty twenty-two water report along with the semi-annual water withdrawal report and backwash water to the state. Staff is working with the contractor to update more G I S information on the water and sewer side. Cost staff or contractor fixed a leak at the wastewater treatment plant. Staff at the time was prepping for the new chem scan upgrade, but it's just about finished and they're thrilled with how it's working so far. Contractor took down some trees on Hampton Valley Road, which had fallen during a storm. The fire protection contractor conducted yearly maintenance on town's fire extinguishers. And that's the report for January.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions for the town manager related to the report? No, hearing none. Thank you. We move forward. Okay, we turn to the town planner for the town planners' report.
Good evening. I hope you all had a good weekend, adjusting to the new time. Uh, I'll start with the MS four. Last month, the progress report for Silo Hills Storm Water Management Basin retrofit project was submitted to the Chesapeake Bay Trust. And Barton and Judas started their feast of removal operations. I heard that they had some issues with the lift that they were using, but that seems to have cleared up. And the town's website has been updated with the storm water management adjust credit and appeal forms. For those who either need an adjustment of their storm water utility fee or credit for installing a storm water management system. Or even appeals regarding their storm water utility fee. In terms of code enforcement and permits, uh, we processed five zoning permit applications with two single family homes. Two four fences and one street closure. And I also processed a, as one cross connection permit and one firewood permit. Also official letters regarding zoning were provided to potential applicant applicants and that was in addition to responses to zoning inquiry. Planning Commission is scheduled to meet on March twenty-seventh. At their last meeting in January, uh, they approved ordinance number twenty-three dash oh four. But it has yet to go through a public hearing before it comes to this board. Some updates regarding developments. Uh, we've been in discussion with the applicants of Federal Stone Project. And about sewer structure, but they have yet to submit their updated site plan and improvement plans that address all the town's engineering comments. Ripley's Creamery project has been delayed, but they plan to have their ice cream truck open in April. Once they turn their vendor's license application, which I think we received today. Regarding the the Village Liquors and Plaza Inn project, uh, we have the owner seeking approval of an updated edition plat. This will be on the planning commission agenda on, um, March twenty-seventh. McDonald says trying to add a new drive-through lane. They notified us. About the reduction in parking spaces. And, um, but I'm still waiting on their zoning permit application, so. And Mount St. Mary's E-Wing project is still in the planning phase. Um, they want to renovate to accommodate nursing students. For their clinical rotations and they're making, trying to make sure that they have adequate parking that also meet the town's regulations. And we've been recommending EV charging stations and bike racks. There's just discussions about that, but nothing's been finalized. And a couple more items I have, um, the annexation guide that has been updated to reflect the changes included in the recent ordinance, um, twenty-three oh dash oh three. That would require an applicant to reimburse the town for engineering attorney and other consulting fees incurred during the review process. And permit forms have been updated with new contact information and they'll be ready to, um, be uploaded soon.
Thank you. Any questions for the planner? No, okay, all right. We turn now to Commissioner comments. Commissioner Davis.
Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna talk about sports, all about sports tonight. Baseball softball for, uh, boys and girls is underway. They were out practicing tonight, which I thought it was a little cold. I'm glad I wasn't the one out there. But that's great and things should be, uh, in full swing, the first part of April. Like to give a shout out to our Catoctin High School, uh, boys track team. They won the state championship. I guess about two weeks ago. And you, you want to keep an eye out on a young man by the name of Brody Buffington. They, they're claiming this young man is one of the fastest kids in the country. Coming out of a little school like Catoctin High School, so, uh, keep an eye on him. I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be exciting to, to watch. And also, uh, last, Mount St. Mary's is in full swing with all of their spring sports and they're all doing very, very well. And, uh, the, uh, men's and women's basketball just finished up with their tournament in Atlantic City. And they represented the university in the town with great pride. They did very, very well, moving from a small college up to the mid-majors. So there's a lot of, a lot of good sports things going on. So, you know, get out and watch these teams and, uh, and support them and that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sweeney.
As I said, Little League is coming back to town. Um, the concession stands will be open in the park in April. We have, um, a dance coming up for Heritage Day, which is the end of June, which is at the Fire Hall. The fire activities building on Crimley Road. Um, which is March twenty-fifth, and that's all for the community Heritage Day for fireworks and stuff. So, um, come out, enjoy yourself and it's a good band. I do have for, um, Commissioner Bowman-Pallott, the, um, FFA resisted our last meeting for the Lions Club and they would like to help with the community garden. They have a environmentalist group or two or something they have started and they'll be contacting, send me information and I'll get passable into you.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
And I think the, the children, the, uh, the new Lions Club that's, that's hoping to start at the Mount St. Mary's College, the, uh, the kids part of it. I left them know about your, uh, street cleaning that you have coming up.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Sweeney, is that everything?
That's it.
Oh, very good. Thank you, sir. Okay, Mr. Ritz.
Yes, thank you. I attended the second Sustainable Communities Work Group meeting, uh, here at the town office on March second at eleven-thirty. The work group, um, needed to reallocate twenty thousand dollars in legacy grant funds due to the withdrawal of two applications. Uh, I felt that they thoroughly reviewed the remaining applications and made fair recommendations on how the total grant money amount of fifty thousand dollars should be awarded. The remaining ten applicants were all able to receive funds, um, this time originally some were denied. What else do I have here? Um, I still like to consider in the future. I know we have some budget time coming up, so I like to get that out of the way, but before our next round of legacy grant applications, um, come through in the fall after we as a board, um, vote on our resolution to seek those funds from the state. Still like to look to see, to get that committee to be harmonious with our other committees, um, in, in, in the code. Just to keep everything consistent. So I'll be bringing that up again late spring or early summer. No sense in doing that now. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Bowman-Pallott.
So, um, as you heard Ms. Willitt say that the town is planning right now for Earth Day festivities on April twenty-second. And it coincides nicely with Citizens Advisory's initiative to do a cleanup day, which is going to be on the same day as Earth Day festivities. So the cleanup day is going to be from nine A M. To twelve. With the idea that meeting back in the town office parking lot to end at the Earth Day festivities. Uh, we are still looking for volunteers for anybody who might want to help with the cleanup day. The more we have, the faster it goes. Um, and then we can come back and celebrate with Ms. King and all the Earth Day festivities. As far as farmers market update, um, Kadeen Brim's doing a wonderful job of reaching out and really extending those feelers to try to find more, uh, farmers to really beef up this year's activity. And we're looking, uh, right now for suggestions input if anybody, um, has an organization or anything that every farmer's market, we're hoping to have, have some kind of kids activity or contest. So to get the kids involved, to have them come down. Uh, we're still at the brainstorming stages. So if anybody out there has any ideas, we're, we're welcome to additional ones. Also with Citizens Advisory, I know that we're, we're losing a member, so maybe at the, I would like to add as an agenda item, maybe next for next time to maybe modify the code to make it a little bit more broad, uh, to try to pull some members in. I, I think that's more appropriate at the end though, Mr. President.
Sure.
Okay. Um, and the community gardens coming along well. Uh, Mr. Jack Deathridge is doing his due diligence and the town is giving a lot of really good feedback. So we're looking to see how that progresses. And, um, finally, um, I second what Joe says. I think it's okay. I think we should come back and look at the legacy grant. And look how we can tighten that up a little bit, given the feedback that we had last at our last meeting. And that is all I had.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, um, two short items, one short item in addition to that. Uh, the North County Regional Park is set to be developed over what had been university land across from St. Anthony's Road. And the county is, I understand it is still moving forward with that, which is great for the North County. There will be opportunities for public input. I haven't heard their timetable yet. But I'm going to ask folks to sort of make a mental note that if there's something at that regional park you are interested in seeing a ball field style, a type, uh, other items, trails, paved trails, natural surface trails, bless you. Please be advised that it's those public forums that they will really take the hard input from the community. It's not just going to be commissioners there. Also folks who say, hey, we're interested in seeing these things. So just be mindful of that. Uh, with that in consideration, also I have some good news. The county did budget a study. And the study is to create, uh, is intending, we hope to create a pedestrian link between the town of Emmitsburg and the university. And hopefully press on to the regional park. And if funds are available, if the, uh, the expense of the first pieces of research in the study allow, uh, to press on toward Thurmont. Now, if you know Thurmont, they have a really successful program underway where they're building trail and they're really, uh, working to link the north and the south of the community. And it would be a really wise thing for us to consider, uh, attaching ourselves to this county project to push toward connection ultimately to Frederick and the canal. Uh, these types of pedestrian ways bring millions of dollars in tourist spending over time and they are well worth the investment. But to the point, the county has funded a study. And at a future time, they're going to be talking about asking for input from the community. So again, put that in the back of your head and be mindful that, uh, if there's something you want to see along the route, for example, benches or call boxes or lighting here or certain styles of crosswalks. You'd be mindful that they want to have that input from the community. So these are real wins for our community because the more mobility we have, the better off we are, especially linking with the university, especially with the university building more in town with the, uh, the E-Wing project with the, uh, the nurse practitioner program. Changing gears from there. Like joke, get it changing gears. Crickets. Okay, we move on. The, uh, only meeting I can share that I attended is the Lions Club Planning Program for, uh, Community Day. And other than that, I've been sick and in bed. So if folks have tried to reach out to me, uh, I have some emails I'm still getting to. I'm sorry I wasn't able to get back to them more promptly, but I will be moving through those and with that I end it and hand it over to Mr. Mayor. Yes.
Thank you. Hey, thank you for serving on that, uh, county committee. I know it's a due diligence to go down, travel down there at night and then, uh, but it's, uh, something we've all worked on for decade, uh, over a decade now getting it connected to the mount and, uh, this may be it. Also, I want to congratulate you on the, uh, the clinic you're going to have here for coaches in April. That's gonna be phenomenal. He's gonna, uh, he's taken upon himself to, uh, Chris Reddall to, uh, clinic for coaches of biking and it'll be held at the mother seat in school. They get a little fee for this and if it's a regional, it's a state interstate, uh, multi-state thing. Congratulations to you and you'll have more on that next one, but, um, uh, it's, it's a lot of powerful, wonderful things being done here if we work toward those. Melissa McKinney will be running a baton death march, as you know, Mr. Say. Uh, walk around the loop at the park, fifty, I think it's fifty-one laps she's gonna have to do and she's gonna do it on, um, March twenty-fifth. And if we, I'll give her support starts, it's be a twelve hour and, and she starts at about seven thirty in the morning. It's got a lot of support. She's gonna put a rucksack on about fifteen, uh, and she has these wonderful, um, veterans. I can't remember soldiers, angels and, um, red, white and blue and, uh, group. It's, it's just really terrific what she's doing and, and, uh, and that group, they have that Emmitsburg walking group. If you want to join something, I think, uh, Mr. Jack back there, I think you're in that, aren't you, sir? Yes. And then there are fifty-one of you and, and it's, uh, got a face. Well, it's good. They maybe they shuttle, but, uh, if they got a Facebook and it's just terrific use of the park that's being done there. Let's see, transit meeting, uh, for many years of working on this, everybody diligently to try. And I know Mr. Davis has been working on this recently about the, um, uh, getting extra, uh, bus routes to, uh, our, our metropolis up here from Frederick and they're gonna, April first, they're gonna start some routes where you can go down on the Saturday, midday, uh, on Tuesday and Thursday. Check, check their website. We'll have it up there. I think we already have it up there, our website and contact them, but twice a week you can go in midday rather than seven o'clock in the morning. So we had a rollout of that with, uh, the mayor of Brunswick and myself and the mayor of Thurmont there. And it's, uh, honestly, it's something that it was interrupted by COVID, but we've all been working on that for a long time. Let's see, I toured the, um, uh, three projects over the, uh, daughter charity, Saint Joseph House, as they call that. The biggest building in Frederick County that's not a warehouse. Uh, it's over ten acres, you know, the building and, uh, uh, this pre-seminary wing that'll open next August. And also the museum and, and the, uh, another project there, uh, the museum and gift shop, uh, off the, uh, the Basilica will open up, uh, at that same time. And a year out from that, they they'll be opening the Public Services School at, in the other wing there. And that, these are terrific programs, bring a lot of uses of repurposing a whole building that's over there. Bring a lot of life for people moving around in, uh, downtown and, uh, it'd be a wonderful, uh, sensitive thing. I hate to say it, but our sister city Lusk ha- has been bombed and is, is taking in stuff if you can keep them in your prayers. It's, it's, it's still there, that horrible war. We don't want to do anything and, uh, wanna sort of fighting by proxy, but it's, uh, it's, uh, that their time has come and it's, um, it's a very sad time and if they can, anything you do for their, uh, them, I appreciate. I think that's about it, but, uh, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, at this time we turn to public comments. So I have folks sign up. Mr. Ward, you've signed up for the vigilant host company loan amendment. I'll ask you at the time that that agenda item comes up to please speak at that time. Uh, Mr. Sloan, you signed up related to the, the topic is the fence, the, the correct. Okay. Just want to make sure that you know that that agenda item has been postponed to our next meeting. So, um, that's kind of where we are at the moment. All right. So we now turn to, uh, well, we would turn to administrative business. We don't have any at this time. So we move to the consent agenda. So.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I see some young faces back there. Were they here to speak on something and didn't know to sign up or? Okay, okay. But what, okay, what about you guys? You, you guys could. They work for you.
Very good.
God bless you.
All right. Virtuous. Okay. So with that in mind, Mr. Davis, are we good?
Yep.
Okay. Understood. All right. So we turn now for our consent agenda. The first item relates to the reappointment of Mr. Scott Frager to the Board of Appeals with the term of, uh, two seventeen twenty-three to seventeen twenty-two. Do we want to take these collectively or individually? Is there a suggestion from staff?
Probably individually, since they all have different committees, except for the two and three.
Okay. So with that in mind, is there a motion to accept the appointment of Mr. Frager as presented? Thank you. Is there a second for Commissioner Davis's motion?
I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Anybody against? The motion carries five to zero. Now we turn to the reappointment of Carolyn Miller to the Parks and, uh, Parks Committee, uh, with a term of three thirteen twenty-three to three thirteen twenty-two. Is there a motion to accept this reappointment?
I move.
Thank you. Is there a second for Commissioner Sweeney's motion?
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney, seconded by Commissioner Bowman-Pallott. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against? Motion carries five to zero. We now turn to the reappointment of Mr. Martin Miller to the Parks Committee, uh, with a term of three thirteen twenty-two to three thirteen twenty-two.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second for Mr. Ritz's motion?
Second.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Mr. Ritz, seconded by Commissioner Bowman-Pallott. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries five to zero. No nays, no nays. Thank you. All right. The next item is to accept Mr. Mark Walker's resignation from the Citizens Advisory Committee. Uh, is there a motion to accept Mr. Walker's resignation?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second for Commissioner Sweeney's motion? Second. Okay. Motion has been made by Commissioner Sweeney, seconded by Commissioner Bowman-Pallott. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody against? Motion carries five to zero. All right. Uh, last item so far is the appointment of Valerie Turnquist to the Planning Commission with a term of three thirteen twenty-two to three one twenty-two. Is there a motion? Is there, uh, a motion from the board?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second for Commissioner Davis's motion?
Second.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Davis, seconded by Commissioner Bowman-Pallott. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody against? Motion carries five to zero. Very good.
Commissioner Reddall, just a note that, um, Glenn Blanchard has resigned from the Planning Commission. The board will have to formally accept his resignation at the April meeting.
Right. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you very much. All right, we now turn to the treasurer for our treasurer's report.
We had a beginning balance of February the first of nine million ninety-eight thousand ninety-six dollars. Total deposits were two hundred and ninety-three thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Total withdrawals were four hundred and thirty-one thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars. Which left us with the operating balance forwarded, which was eight million nine hundred and eighty-six thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars. Uh, cop, uh, copy of the ten checks are at the bottom. If anybody has any questions.
Any questions for the treasurer or staff related to these items?
No.
Okay, hearing none, we move forward. Um, staff, a quick question. I don't know if we're hearing feedback from our Zoom feed. Is that, am I the only person hearing a little radio? Oh, okay. All right. Very good. Thank you. No, 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 no worries. No worries. Okay. Just so we know what it is, we're okay. All right. All right. We now turn to the Planning Commission report.
There is no nothing to report. There was no meeting in February. However, as Ms. Hassan stated, we will be meeting March twenty-seventh. So we'll have something next month.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, so a quick reminder, we're going to our agenda items at this time. Item number one has been postponed to our next meeting. Is that correct, staff?
That's correct. We need to advertise for a public hearing.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we now turn to the discussion related to the increase to water and sewer rates. Staff, we turn to you.
I didn't know if you wanted to move Mr. Ward's agenda item ahead of this unless you wanted to stick around for the water and sewer rates.
Mr. Ward. So we turn to you, sir. This is for consideration approval of the amendment to loan and financing agreement for the extension of credit made to the vigilant host company of Emmitsburg as a successor by merger to the Emmitsburg Volunteer Ambulance Company.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tom Ward, I'm president of the vigilant host company. Just to run down on this item, back in two thousand and six, the former Emmitsburg Volunteer Ambulance Company began their project of building the station at seventeen seven oh one Kremier Road, which is now our Activities Building. As part of the financing agreements, they executed an economic revenue bond with the town and PNC Bank. At that point, the town verified the Emmitsburg Volunteer Company's nonprofit status and the nonprofit how it benefited the town having that building there with the social hall and EMS service. With the successful merger of VHC and the Emmitsburg Ambulance Company five years ago, we are now listed as the borrower on this loan. So towards the end of two thousand and twenty-two, we were contacted by our commercial banking advisor at PNC informing us that a portion of the loan agreement that generates the interest rate called LIBOR is being eliminated and is now being replaced with SOFR, another interest generating banking model. This amendment to the loan to be signed tonight is just acknowledging the change of this new banking model and the original language shows LIBOR. Since the town, EVAC, now us and PNC all originally signed onto the original loan, all parties now must agree to the amendment to this new loan item. VHC's and the town attorney have each reviewed the agreement under good with its language. So and just for information stats, as of today, there's just over a million dollars left on the repayment of the loan for that building. I do have copies of financial statements available to the board if you request it. Currently, today, we are in our best financial standing. We have been in our about hundred and forty year history. We have solid planning in place to continue the repayment of this loan. Recently, we paid off the latest addition of renovation to the firehouse. All of our current apparatus is all paid off. We expect to take a delivery of a new ambulance next month, have cash on hand for that. And in addition, we are anticipating a fall delivery of our new tower ladder with a price tag of about one point six million dollars. And we anticipate being able to pay off that cash on hand as well. So this loan agreement to execute between the town, VHC and PNC Bank is just saying that there's a new agreement called SOFR. It's taken place of LIBOR. And if any questions, I can answer them.
Any questions for the president? Well, that's a good sign, I think. Okay, so board, obviously, we fully understand the value that the vigilante company brings to our community. My hope is we all endorse this. It's not often that I give a little soapbox on this one, but I'll grandstand today. This is worthy of our affirmation. So with that in mind, staff, I turn to you. The type of motion, this is a new one to me. So what type of language are we looking for in our motion?
Basically, exactly. I will just reiterate, Leslie Powell did review everything. Everything's in in great order. I would just make your motion just as it's written here. Approval of the amendment to loan financing, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, very good. So we'll use the language from page one. If everybody's okay with that, I'm an item number three. So is there a motion to approve the amendment to loan and financing agreement for the extension of credit made to the vigilant host company of Emmitsburg as the successor by merger to the Emmitsburg Volunteer Ambulance Company?
Yes.
Okay.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second.
Very good. Motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz. It's been seconded by Commissioner Sweeney. Is there any further discussion? That's a great question.
Mr. Davis. Commissioner Davis, I would abstain.
I would suggest that, yes.
It means you can't vote on any Lions Club stuff.
Air on the side of conservative in that one. That would be wise. Okay, with that in mind, I'll call to vote. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anybody against? Okay, the motion carries four to zero with one abstention. In favor are Commissioner Sweeney, Commissioner Ritz, Commissioner Bowman-Pallett and Commissioner O'Donnell. Abstaining is Commissioner Davis. Thank you, sir. Congratulations on your success. That's phenomenal. Okay, now we flip flop these items. So we now turn to item two, discussion related to increase to water and sewer rates.
So you have the handout in front of you for the the presentation. It was never intended to be a PowerPoint because there's a lot of information on some of the slides that are going to make it very blurry. But I thought I'd put up there to follow along a little bit. I don't know if anybody wants to turn one of the lights out. Unless it's my eyes, it looks like it's hard to read.
Too much?
That's, I'm good. So when I I met with Ms. Powell a while back on on preparing the presentation for this meeting, it was her recommendation that I'd go back from the beginning and kind of do a historical overview where we started. So we started in November. December seventh, twenty twenty-one, the board approved the bid to complete a water rate, sewer rate and tap fee study. And it was originally posted in October twelfth. The deadline was November thirtieth. Again, the board reviewed and approved the current vendor on December seventh, twenty twenty-one. Mr. Tabler and myself began right away working with the consultants in January. So we had our initial and then we had many meetings between staff and our consultant and a lot of numbers going back and forth. So we had our first presentation of the board on October third, twenty twenty-two. Our second presentation was on November seventh, twenty twenty-two. We held a advertised and held a public hearing on December twelfth, twenty twenty-two. At the recommendation of the board, we went back with some different numbers. You want to move? The principles and objectives of the rate study, basically the water and sewer enterprise funds need to be financially self-supporting. They have to sustain themselves. They have to be sustainable. They have to bring in enough revenue to support daily, yearly and multi-year infrastructure projects. Each fund should maintain a minimum of ninety days worth of funding to provide for contingencies and unplanned expenses. That is an industry standard of ninety days. USDA does not say you have to have a ninety-day reserve. However, they recognize the need for reserves. They allow the towns, the attorneys and the auditors and accountants to set their own ninety-day or their own rainy day fund. We just went with the industry standard of ninety days. The history of water and sewer rate increases. The last water rate increase that affected the average user, which is about ninety percent of your users of the water fund. The minimum for a three quarters up to six thousand or six thousand to ten thousand for a three-quarter meter went from thirty-two fifty to thirty-five dollars. The minimum for a one-inch meter went from forty-two fifty to forty-five dollars. You've had seventeen years of the same rate. The last water rate increase that affected users over ten thousand gallons was in May of twenty thirteen. And that only affect your overages, your over charges for use over ten thousand were raised by thirty-three percent. For example, usage of ten thousand gallons, ten thousand one gallon to twenty thousand gallons went from three dollars to four fifty. Your sewer rate increases, you raise the insurance or insurance sewer rate due to mandatory construction of the new wastewater treatment plant, sewer rates had to be increased. The board voted to increase them in two phases. Between April first of two thousand and twelve to June thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen, the minimum sewer rate increased by twenty-seven percent. The overage charges increased for everyone using over ten thousand gallons by thirty-three percent. Effective July one, two thousand and fourteen, the minimum sewer rates increased by another twenty-one percent and the overages over ten thousand gallons by another twenty-five percent. This is why the recommended increase of sewer rates affected July first, two thousand and twenty-three will only be three percent from here on out because we had, we did this, this substantial increases in two thousand and twelve and two thousand and fourteen. Okay, that one's a little hard to see. Factors affecting charges and rates. Basically, your operating and maintenance expense changes. They affect your charges and rates. To every year, you should, you should typically budget five percent escalation rate for labor expenses and two point five escalation rate per year for other expenses. As I mentioned before, there have been no significant increases in water for fourteen-plus years, seventeen for the average user. Capital improvement plans, continued expenses related to necessary improvements. You have to invest in the treatment, distribution and collectus collection systems of your water and sewer infrastructure. Customer changes, we've had no real growth, no real residential growth. Therefore, we don't have the tap fees to to pay for the infrastructure. Water usage and sewage generation changes. There's been no growth based on the historical trend and as you'll see in a future slide, in reality, water usage has decreased over the years. Miscellaneous revenue, revenue changes, we haven't had any. Recommended reserve target, if you make your reserve target of a ninety-day operating expense, which is about twenty-five percent of your budget, you need in reserves two hundred and ten thousand by fiscal year twenty-eight or two hundred and forty thousand in fiscal year twenty thirty-one. Nicole.
Yeah. We want to show a slide where we showed the usage in gallons build for the last several fiscal years. As you, if you look closely, as you can see, ten to twelve years ago, we have, we actually build more water in the town. This is mainly based on a couple of our bigger users using more water at that point in time and has steadily decreased over the last several years. One of the, one of the couple of the bigger users are FEMA and the daughters of charity, which has lost a lot of population over the last several years. And want to show that. Yeah. Okay, no, 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 no. This correlates to the water utility charges. What I did is I went back on the different audits that we've had the last several years and I pulled out the utility charge within the water fund. And you can see there's a core correlation between the amount of water that was built and the final utility charges that we put on the books for each of the financial years. And you can see there also that that correlates into over the last several years, we've had a lowering of the utility charges that are charged each year on the books. This slide gives you a representation of the cash balances within the water fund. To the left is the fiscal year. The middle column is the cash balances that we've had as a final cash amount within our audits. Correlating to this final cash balance and which can vary from year to year are the number of tap fees that the town takes in on a given year. For example, on the left there, anything that's in red is a lowering of the cash balance from year to year. The one year two thousand and fourteen is in green because it actually increased at the end of the year and that was based directly on the tap fees of about four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that was taken in that year. But as you can see, year to year up to two thousand and twenty-two, it has steadily lowered on on a yearly basis. Even though the last several years, we have gotten in some tap fees. One thing I want to note for two thousand and twenty-two is that sixty-eight hundred dollar amount is an amount where we took out the American Rescue Plan balances. So if you, those theoretically are in the water fund, but if you would subtract those out, that's a true reading of where we're at if you do not consider the ARP funds.
This slide here, we had in the initial presentation, it essentially shows you the the net revenue requirements that are needed to to run your sewer system. Right now, we're only showing out to twenty twenty-seven, what what we take into consideration are your day-to-day operations, your administrative operations. All the operational costs from electric to chemicals to lines to meters, to everything that it takes to run both your system or your water system. And then we add in any anticipated grants that we have. This does include the American Rescue Plan's money that has been taken into consideration in all the calculations. Roughly about three point one million dollars in ARPA money. And so this is what you basically need, the total revenue requirement you need to bring in to be self-sustaining.
Thanks. Good question, really quick.
Next one. Thank you.
Ms. Willett.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that the last slide, is that also taking into consideration what you mentioned earlier of the annual escalation of five percent and two and a half percent? Was it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So it takes, it takes in the consideration inflation across the board.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
And the operating expenses, you see how it kind of nudges up as we go year to year from the seven hundred thousand to eight hundred thousand. You know, rounded off. Yeah, under the current debts are a couple of loans that we still have on the books for different water lines and the new debt service that we're going to be bringing on.
Thanks. I assume that was part of that. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
One of the things we wanted to look at is concerns with an aging water infrastructure. There hasn't been historically, we had not invested much in our water system for several years. And so we wanted to look back and see what what's the cost been to the system by not by not investing into the into the improvements. As everybody can remember, the the twenty nineteen discolored water complaints. There was a difficult time in town. It was caused by several old ductile iron pipes that have tuberculosis. We are working to correct that with the DePaul Street Waterline Project and the North Seaton Waterline Project. We replaced an aging pressure reducing vault at the Fraley Road and Annandale Road. We installed new equipment and chemical feeding at the water plant. We've repaired several large leaks, including the one on Waynesboro Pike. Insult new water line underneath Waynesboro Pike. We flushed our hydrants when we we took samples of residents' water. That all costs money. It was, it was a an endeavor for the town. Another concern with aging water infrastructure, your water leaks or your water main breaks, decreased water pressure and possible contaminants entering the water system. Yeah, Cole would like to go back.
Can you go back to the water tap feeds slide? Go backwards.
Right there.
I I wanted to emphasize and I forgot to mention, as you see the the different fiscal years in two thousand and twenty, I want to point out that the cash balances of about, I believe it's a two hundred and sixty thousand. That would be a ninety-day reserve. So up until recently, the last couple of years, we've maintained the ninety-day reserve that we're looking as a goal to have. So I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah. And I wanted to highlight some of the improvements we've done since two thousand and twenty with some of this with board approval. We installed the HAC SC one thousand to control and monitor turbidity, pH chlorine pack, et cetera. We installed two HAC SC forty-two hundreds and Clara software to monitor, monitor the plant and remotely control everything on SC one thousand. Installed seven new updated turbidity meters, installed new soda ash tank piping valves and pH probe. Installed two new CL seventeen. This is an online constant chlorine monitoring system. In stored new, install new chlorine feed system piping and injectors that work along with the SC one thousand. Added media to the roughing filters for better filter performance, fixed the blow-off valve and added time to air scour on the blower. Added two digital differential pressure gauges, repiped and relocated the pack feed system. Installed new solar panel and satellite system upgrade at Rainbow Lake with the new software for the LG. Installed new solar panel and satellite system upgrade at Rainbow Lake with the new software for the LG Sonic to better control and monitor different levels at the lake, drained blue storage tank and cleaned it out. Had the satellite dish at the water treatment plant adjusted for better internet for remote access and monitoring. And added a big monitor in the waste or the water treatment plant that provides data from the SC-1000 to monitor plant operations. We've done a lot over the last year or two.
And one thing I want to add is those types of, types of items that are asset, types of items. They may not actually get completely expensed on the financial statements. They may be capitalized as an asset and depreciated over their useful life. But you still affects the cash balances that you have as far as acquiring the assets in the, in the initially. So I just want to point that out.
On top of this one.
This is just a listing of our current charges and fees for our water and sewer charges. As you can see, this would be our, our point basis for comparison for any types of new changes that we have. As you see, and what we're proposing is for different size, for different size meters, we have different initial amounts that are, that are due. And that, that continues with the, before we're proposing.
Alright, so here's your percentage scenarios. After the last town meeting, after listening to the commissioners and what, what you guys wanted to see. The recommendation will be from the mayor and staff to implement this July 1st, 2023. So it would take effect fiscal year 24. So that's why you see year one left out because we won't have a year one now. So obviously scenario one through A dash E is the percentage required for X years to achieve the target balance by the end of fiscal year 28. The target balance for fiscal year 28 is 210,000, which is about 25% of your operating expenses for 90 days, and that goes back to the one revenue chart. As you'll see, scenario 1A, obviously at 160%. Scenario 1B for two years is at 70%. Scenario three is at 49%. Scenario four is at 40%. Scenario 1E is at five years at 36%. And then year seven, you would go to the 3% annual increase. Scenario 1B requires, gee, I already read that, okay. Scenario 2A, 2B and 2C. Scenario 2A is a 30%, it takes you eight years to get to your reserves. Your 90-day reserve. Scenario 2B at 25% will take you nine years. Scenario 2C, you don't even reach it at the end of year 10. That's supposed to be the same one, isn't it? Yeah, it's basically the second, second page is essentially what you saw on that chart there. Okay, so that page can't read at all. Is the chart that shows the proposed water rate increase of 36%. Which is roughly is the five years. So then beginning in fiscal year 29, which would be July 1, 2029, is when you would reach your 90-day or your 90-day threshold at $210,000. You'll see the current rate is for your three-quarter inch meter, which is the majority of your users between the three-quarter inch and one inch. So if you'll see fiscal year 24, the rate would go from to, from 35 to 47.60. Fiscal year 25, 64.74. Fiscal year 26, 88.04. Fiscal year 27, 119.74. Fiscal year 28, 162.84. Ending up in fiscal year 29 at the 3% at 167.73. And then you'll see, these are seeing your packets, obviously, the different meter sizes. We currently do not have a 10-inch meter or 10-inch line meter, correct Cole?
Officially in ordinance, I believe.
Yeah, we do not officially have anybody with a 10-inch as of today. But with the future growth, potential growth, we want to just include that. And then below there, you'll see the overage charges. And then on the following page is your propose, is the other proposed at 30%. And again, that takes you eight year to the fiscal year 2031. So you would meet your 90-day reserves in July 1st of 2031. At that point, you need a target cash balance of $240,000. And there you can see the listed rate changes from a three-quarters and a one-quarter. Three-quarters is $45.50. Fiscal year 25 is 59.15. Fiscal year 26 is 76.90. Fiscal year 27, 99.96. Fiscal year 28, $129.95. 29 would be 168.94. And then fiscal year 30 is 174.01.
The next couple of slides are just some examples of how the typical resident in the different rates they would have for, and we wanted to emphasize the three-quarter meter because 95% of the accounts of the town are three-quarter meters. We listed an example of 6,000 gallons, which is the minimum, and 10,000 gallons. 10,000 gallons or less is over half of the users in town at 55%. And 87% use 20,000 gallons or less. With these rates, we, we just wanted to give an example of where things would be at certain percentages over the, over the given years based on the increases that were proposed.
And we did that for both the 36% and the 30%. The final page of the PowerPoint would just be what the mayor and staff's recommendation would be. The mayor and staff's recommendation would be to be effective July 1st, 2023. We recommend adopting a water rate increase at 36% for five years. And then beginning July 1st, 2028, water increases will continue at a rate of 3% each fiscal year. For sewer rates effective July 1st, 2023, we recommend adopting a sewer rate increase at 3% each fiscal year. And then again, we would recommend conducting another water and sewer rate study in about five, five or so years. That's, that's just the presentation.
Any questions for us related to the presentation?
Yes. I by no means call myself a mathematician, so I'm going to lead with that. However, I sat down and tried to plug all of this into a spreadsheet to figure out what this was going to look like with, which each of these rates. And I just put it in, so he was be starting off with the same amount for each scenario. Unless I did my numbers wrong, which is very possible. It looks to me like there's, the five-year rate would bring in more money at the end than the others, the other scenarios. More so even than the 30-year or the 30%. So the five-year at 36, I believe is what it is, right? Five-year at 36. Yes, so that one to me, when I plug it in, looks like it's the most expensive in the long run. That we're going to recoup the most money in that scenario. Whereas if I plug it into like rip the Band-Aid off one year, how much we're paying after 10 years to the end user is not nearly as much. So I guess what I'm trying to say is, is if we put actual numbers to these, so we can see how it plays out. This perplexes me. And I think that's what public is going to be asking for is, I know I'm not the only one confused by this. So I needed to put a real-life number and like write it out to see, okay, what does this look like come year 10? So my question is, I think the best scenario that we have is to go back in time and fix it, which we can't do, right? So now I'm torn between, I don't think anybody can do a one-year rip it off like a Band-Aid, but at the same time, I feel like if we go with a five-year, we're going to be paying out more than we need to. So does the five-year need to be revised? Because that's bringing in the most money. Am I reading that?
Can I ask you how you came up with that?
Yeah, I made a spreadsheet.
I want to make sure you're taking everything into consideration.
Well, I just, I just took the, okay, so I put it into a spreadsheet. And I, and like I said, I did this like with an hour before the meeting, so I could be completely wrong. But I think this is what we need to see in order to really wrap our heads around what are we, what are we voting on? So I took the rates, I can send you the spreadsheet. So I just put any dollar in, it doesn't matter, you can switch out there. So let's say my bill started at $100, you could put $10. What is that going to look like at 160% the next year, plus 3% after that, all the way through year 10? And I came up with a dollar amount.
Was that solely water? Solely water, not sewer, not trash, not anything else.
Correct.
Okay.
So there's a big discrepancy there with the ending totals. That's what's confusing me.
I don't think I understand.
The, the, these, these charts are gotten from our, our the contract we have with Mr. Maker and these are the scenarios he brought up. On a, on a given year, you have different expenses that are increasing each year to year. This is a, this is the schedules that get us to the amounts for the reserve and we would have to check with him.
Well, I know.
I mean. Are you looking for a sample bill that would show
Well.
the outlay of the household at a certain like?
I, what I think we need to see is put a sample bill, it doesn't matter what the number is, year one, what is that going to look all the way across? Year two, I mean for the, all the way down, but when you plug in the same amount using the formulas going across by year 10.
Yeah, I think.
It looks like year five, we're going to be paying out the nose as the most money, if you add it up over that 10 years, we would have paid the most in, in year five scenario. Just by doing the math.
Look at, slow down, slow down, keep going, keep going. Hold on, right there. So if you look at the current rate, so let's just pull the three-quarter meter at 6,000 gallons. The average user is paying $35 for water and $113 for sewer. So their bill for straight water and sewer is $148. Right?
Right.
Okay, so then we take the 36% increase for fiscal year 24. So then you'd be paying $47.60 in water and $116.39 for sewer. That's your, that's your 36% increase. If you flip over to page to the one that shows the 30%, you'll see in fiscal year 24, at 30%, you'll be paying $45.50. And your sewer would be $116.39. So you'd be paying $161.89. So it's roughly two, $2 and some change less. So, and if you, you can look at that across the board in fiscal year 25, your average bill would be 184 at 36% or in fiscal year 25 for 30%, your bill would be 179. So there is a slight difference between your 30% and your 36%. What goes in all those calculations is anticipated infrastructure projects, your escalation rates. So I don't know that you can, I mean, I see, I think I understand what you're trying to do. But there's a lot of things that take into consideration that there are some years that there's more infrastructure projects that will have more money coming out of as opposed to the other fiscal years. If that makes sense.
No.
So, okay, so for example.
I can't be, am I the only one confused by this? I mean, like, be honest.
In fiscal year, we've got an estimated $2.2 million for the North Seaton and the Paul Street Waterlines. In fiscal, in the following fiscal year, we may have the nine to 11 million dollar transmission line down the mountain. The amount of money that's going to have to be put out is going to vary from year to year. And so we try to estimate that. But as far as the percentages are concerned, the bills are different based off the percentages.
Right, exactly. I'm sorry.
Sure, let me just, so for absolute clarity sake, because I think I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
I think. If I were to boil it down to the simplest terms, maybe, though the cost per household will increase over time up to the five-year review. And then it'll be reconsidered. We're anticipating some heavy expenses between now and then. And we're trying to maintain the 90-day reserve while at the same time trying to address the anticipated costs of some heavy infrastructure fixes or even upgrades. I don't, I don't think we're looking at anything extravagant. I think we're just trying to meet the needs of the community as it is, so.
Right, so it's not adding bells and whistle.
Right.
Bells and whistles, it's a matter of upgrading aging infrastructure.
So the expense increase relates to the anticipated cost increase?
Yes.
That's.
Essentially. So, for example, we're preparing the budget. So what, what we spent in, in chemicals last year, let's say it's 30,000. Just in, in inflation alone, it's gone up to about 38,000. And then you compound that across the board in every single area. You know, a simple box of pens gone from $2 to $2.50 and paper. And so trying to be conservative on what we need, but being realistic on the projects that have to be done. It's not exact. It's, it's what we as staff think that our water infrastructure is going to need over the next five to 10 years.
That it's too much.
Yes, my worry is that it's too much. Compared to like if we were to rip it off like a Band-Aid, which nobody wants to do that, I understand. But it, just looking at water, I'm not talking muscle, we're talking about water increases here, right? So just looking at water, what I would be paying in year 10 per month would be significantly less than what I would be paying in year 10 with the, with the five-year plan that you have here with the 36.
Well, think about it this way. 170%, 160%, obviously, nobody is suggesting that. You're ripping the Band-Aid off, you're paying it out of pocket. You're done, so your reserve that you need to meet is less because you're in this current year. You're not adding 10, 15, 20% inflation right off the top. As opposed to, I need to finance my future. So you're going to have to finance it for five years. The cost of everything is going to go up over those five years exponentially.
You're extending your payments like you would, like a car loan.
Understand.
And that's why. So your reserves in five years is more than your reserves right now.
Right.
And your reserves in five years is less than what you're going to need in 10 years.
Right. That part I understand. On my graph, though, it looks like it's going back down again when I get to 25% as far as. I think we need to look at the graph. And like, can you go back to the water rates, the general overview? This page looks like this. No, lost it.
Yes.
So just looking at these, like, it doesn't matter if you take, in my opinion, if you take the three-quarter meter, 6,000 gallons or the three-quarter meter, 10,000 gallons, just pick one of those. What does it look like across the board with every single scenario? So you could compare straight down the line, you know what I mean?
Do every single scenario because we knew hundred and sixty percent, seventy percent, forty-nine percent was off the board. After the last, after the last meeting, so we have not done those numbers.
Right.
Um, and that was based off of the three previous meetings and the.
Right.
From the board.
I know.
Didn't look at those.
I know, and I'm not, I'm not attacking, I'm just trying to make sense of the numbers because when I look at it, it actually looks.
But I don't think, and, and, and I'm not going to sit there and say anything about your calculations, I think possibly you're not taking everything into consideration.
I'm just looking at water rates.
Right.
Right. I know I'm providing a lot of frustration, but I guess the thing is, is as a board, do we agree that twenty-five percent and ten percent, the last two scenarios or whatever it may be, the last three are just off the table? Cause if so, then we really just need to consider the first five. And then that will make things a little bit more clear, but since they're there. To go straight down, what does it look like at the end would be a great comparison of each of these plans.
I, yeah.
But I think as a board, we had a consensus that we were not going to go with the heavy hit upfront.
Right.
In order to be realistic for our community members who are on a fixed income.
Right.
And we're trying to adjust over time, idealistically with the thought that an adjusted income would ju, sorry, um, a fixed income would adjust over time.
Right.
So, no, I don't think we need to consider the bottom, you know, the, the bottom set in that context, but as a board, I think we had driven this very specifically toward what we're seeing in the recommendation.
But, but, but even like the forty, the thirty-six and the thirty are all very close. To have those dollar amounts that you're suggesting, I, I I'd like to see that.
Think it's a, it's a big, big ask, I think that would clear up a lot of confusion. Because if you just put the total next to each one, so you can see going down. I'm just, and I know it's not in correlation to anybody's bill, it's just water rates. Cause then you have to all those other things to factor in, you can see how those percentages hit the same and then go down to three percent, what does that look like in reality?
But you also have to remember that each of those years where there's a percentage that's set, it's an it's a rounding estimate to get to the goal in your ballpark area as for the ninety-day reserve, so. It's not an exact science.
I under, I mean. I understand, but.
Now I'll just say, I, the only thing I'll say is that at the, after the last meeting, the board directed us to look at the thirty-five, the thirty and the twenty-five percent and the ten percent, and so that's what we looked at. We can't, we can't figure out the numbers right now, um, I know you just figured this out tonight.
Yeah.
I mean, I wish we would have known this last Wednesday.
Me too.
When I asked for questions.
I understand, and you know, to sit down and try to, because it's not there. So I sat down to do it myself and that's where I got a discrepancy and I'm like.
And I think, I think honestly, and then there's no disrespect, I think you're missing something. Because we have gone over and over these numbers with the consultant and it, I think you're going to see the repayment because it is so dragged out, you're not getting apples to apples.
I, I understand, and if, if we had a specialist and a consultant do this. It's not that hard to put a total there.
Yeah, we paid him to do it.
For it either, because this is the first that we've heard of it. You know, at the fourth meeting, now we want to add this line with the totals, which is fine.
I mean, just put it into a spreadsheet, that's what I did. And you can change out the, you know, put in a number, ten dollars all the way down, what does it look like? You can see that the numbers go up and then they come back down again. As far as the amount that's paying, it looks to me as if the five-year is the worst option of all of them. And maybe I am reading it incorrectly, but I know I'm going to hear questions from people because my husband's confused. I was on the phone with my brother who's really smart in math too, and we're trying to make sense of this, so I know I'm not the only one out here who's going to want to know realistically what this looks like.
Mr. Davis, if you have a question or? Okay, okay. Mr. Sweeney, any questions? I see your mic's on. Oh, okay, gotcha. Terrific.
I mean, it's like looking at a math problem with no total.
I feel that the, the five year would be to, to get it paid off or up to the three percent as quickly as we can. Would help out everybody, but being that we let, you gotta factor in, we gotta keep everything repaired, which they don't have one, which is not on there, because we don't know what's going to be need fixed year to year. So you never know that until you have to fix it. I was one for that too, not, not raising the rates for so long. So if, if we don't do anything, we're going to end up in the, and the longer you prolong it out, the worse it's going to get.
I'm not saying we don't raise rates though.
Yeah.
I'm saying to make an educated decision. Should there be an equal sign there at the end of the math problem?
When are we planning on voting on this? Next month's meeting?
So next month, we were told a public hearing, we have to advertise the public hearing. And for that, we need to have the rate set, because you have to advertise the ordinance with the rate set. So that takes you to April, obviously, we need to know where we're going to plan for the budget, the board gets presented the budget May first.
So we were actually going to vote on something tonight?
Did note tonight, there's no vote tonight, it's the direction. So staff will know the direction, kind of like we did the second meeting, you guys gave us a direction of the percentage that you wanted. We advertised for the public hearing, basically, it's giving everybody notice that the board will be voting to approve water rates and sewer rate increases at X percentage at the April town meeting. The public hearing has to be very specific, it can't be a vague percentage, you have to say exactly what it is.
Then we do have to vote tonight.
It's more like a consent.
What we would do is we, we would provide a consent to give staff direction.
Right.
And if we have a majority in concurrence, then staff would move forward with that as their instruction to meet our request, does that make sense?
So when does a public hearing, how, how far in advance? Do we have to announce that?
We have to advertise no less than ten days, no more than thirty days in advance.
So there's a high probability we would see a second meeting this month? Is that realistic?
This March?
Correct.
Not in March.
No, we're.
You have a planning commission meeting on the twenty-seventh.
Okay.
Obviously, obviously staff's frustrated because we sent this out, this initial one here that you're talking about in February. So we're a little frustrated, we've put countless hours into this presentation. We've been over, Cole and I have been over the numbers up and down, left and right. Should have there been a, a equal sign at the end, I think we could have, I think it's oversimplifying it because you're not taking into many things into consideration. If that's what the board needs, then we'll have to go back and, and work with the consultant and come up with some equal signs. Based off the direction, but as you know, we're in the middle of budget preparations right now. So we need to kind of have some direction.
So board, I'll ask the question therefore, we want to direct staff to work with a consultant in order to or move forward on getting us quote unquote the equal sign? So that way we have the numbers? Or do we want to give staff direction saying, uh, we've, we as a group in consensus lean toward one choice and direct them to move forward in that, in that way?
I understand what Commissioner Bowman-Palat stating, and I know we've had this for several months now, but I know full well too that if there's more confusion in the long run regarding those that will be actually making the payments every quarter. We're going to have more people at our meeting at the public hearing, raising such questions with frustration. So I think a visual.
At that meeting?
A visual showing the numbers is like, you know, one example with whatever we go with. So people can relate it and not have to do the math in their heads, I think would be ideal.
I mean, one of the things, I mean, we tried to show an example at the end with the three-quarter meters with six thousand gallons and ten thousand gallons. There's a lot of numbers that go into all of this and we just wanted to represent what ninety-five percent of the folks would, would, would be dealing with, with the new, um, recommendation. So we did try to show an example of, of what the bills would be.
So if you're, you're a user at, um, at thirty-six percent for five years, we've got what your bill on the water side is going to look like from fiscal year twenty-four to fiscal year twenty-nine at thirty-six percent. And on the other page, we have it at thirty percent, what your bill's going to look like, so.
But i- it, it doesn't have every scenario that would play out on that chart. That chart was more of a representation of if you go by certain increases in percentages, how many years it would take to get to your goal of a ninety-day reserve and.
Okay, so but what we're looking at here, if we look at this, um, thirty percent, okay, so we got, we have thirty-five dollars now, thirty percent increase is forty-five, fifty. A thirty percent increase to that is fifty-nine, fifteen, and so on and so on, then, then you get into the three percent and FY thirty. What other numbers are you talking about that need to be added to this?
So you have your, um, well, your overage, if you go over, then you have your sewer.
Well, I don't, just.
Commissioner Rich, what, what's your specific question on this, on this chart?
We're, we'll be voting to raise the water rates.
Correct.
So I just want to focus on.
And this is just like this.
Water rate.
This particular slide is just an example at the thirty percent for a three-quarter inch meter at the minimum six thousand gallons and at the ten thousand gallons, just to give a sample of what the, the billing would be with the increases on a year-to-year basis.
Okay.
Yeah.
And obviously, if you use ten thousand, there's your overages, so that makes sense. So to tie that in with, to what Commissioner Bowman-Palat was stating, what numbers are you seeing that don't jive with this?
If, honestly, if I'm the, if I'm the only one that plugged numbers into this spreadsheet, that's, I'm just wondering, did the other commissioners do that?
I did not.
Because if you do.
And we can work with Commissioner Palat, you could show us what you're looking at.
I'll show you what I'm looking at.
Certainly try to resolve any.
And I don't mean to hold anything up, I'm just want to have all the information and once I plugged it in, it doesn't look right. And it's very possible, my mouth sucks, I'm, I'm owning that one hundred percent, but I don't feel like.
So for clarification for everybody here in the room, as we're looking at the chart there, we see the water numbers up top for the three-quarter meter at six thousand gallons. Per use, down below, we see a second number, which is a larger sum. Uh, and that relates to, uh, the sewer minimum and overage and totals. So when we combine the both, that's how we get what's in the framed total box there, and we see it.
For each of the scenarios, that the six thousand minimum into ten thousand gallons, which would be your first tier of increases for.
Right, and but.
And just, just as an example.
Right, but what I'm getting at is, we see a progression over time from fiscal year twenty-four through fiscal year thirty. So that's, that's what this chart is trying to show or is showing, I'm not even trying, um, what it's showing us. So the expense for water and sewer over time unfortunately does get more expensive. But so certainly do the costs of operating water and sewer as a result of the, and the antiquity of our system, it's, it's old, it's ancient.
And, and unfortunately, with, with the percentages, as you go year to year, you're basing, you're not basing it on the base year for the, for the additional increase, you're basing it on the current year going forward.
Yep, I factored that in.
Okay.
Yes.
And at the end of the five years, we might have to change it again. Because it's going to be reviewed again on point nine.
Okay, so staff, you need action from us, correct? So a consensus?
Four.
Correct, okay, so board. Uh, do we want to see the, well, hold on, I'm sorry, Mr. Davis, you had something maybe you were pondering or?
Yeah, still am.
Okay, all right. Anything you want to share or?
How much, how much time do we need when, uh, if we want to have a very, very short workshop? How much time do we need to announce that? So now you're going to shoot me when I say this, but, okay. I'll bring the coffee and donuts. We have an hour workshop Saturday morning to have those numbers together and that way you would have all of next week or, you know, we would give you a direction by the end of this week on where we want you to go.
This coming Saturday?
Saturday, the eighteenth.
I cannot do that this Saturday.
Right, I'm, I'm.
I'm not trying to get out of it, I, I hear what you're trying to propose.
That's okay.
I have a death in the family and I'm traveling to Baltimore for a funeral that day, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I'm just trying, I'm trying to make it so, um, I, I want to see those numbers, but I also want to get this moving.
Okay, can we do a workshop one evening next week? That won't conflict with meetings, that would give staff a little bit more time to.
And I think it'd be very short, I think it'll be a very short meeting, uh, and we're answering everybody's questions because.
Tuesday, the twenty-first, um, that stands to reason. No, not with staff, okay, not, all right, Wednesday, the twenty-second. I don't want there to be any conflict, I thought there was, but nope. All right, how about Monday, one week from tonight, a workshop at seven PM?
And I'll just caution, it's provided we get anything back from the consultant because he's fulfilled his contract. And we've gone above and beyond with him, so that's provided that he's still.
Well, I think with, with, with what they're asking, is this something, Cole, is that something you can put together to put?
We need to see what she's actually doing, um, because it's not making any sense to us, and I'm not saying it's not right. But it's, it's not really making any sense to us and we're not sure how she's getting to where she is. So we would like to see that, I, I think she said you could email it to us and then we'll take a look at it and then.
So alls I'm doing is taking a fixed dollar amount like ten dollars and then adding on a hundred and sixty percent. And then from there going, increasing that by three percent and taking that all the way out to year ten. Then I take ten dollars and I increase it by seventy percent and the next year I increase the last year by seventy percent.
I see what she's doing.
I would, I would imagine if you had it to where it all equaled out, there'd be percentage changes all over the board in the chart. They get to the same spot at your end of your ten years. Because the three percent is used as a consistent basis, how you're looking at it, it may be true. But if you don't do it that way, you'll have percentages all over the board to get to the same number is, is my guess.
Right.
If that makes any sense.
So I shouldn't look at it through year ten then, I should look at it more like through year five.
Well, in just setting up the chart, if, if you, if your goal was to have the numbers be the same after a given year, you would have percentages that were changed and fluctuate year to year to get to the same ending result. With these three percent increases, with the initial higher increases and then going to a three percent year to year at, at a given point, you're not going to end any given year with maybe with a consistency unless you had all those percentages change year to year to get to that point. If that makes any sense, so it might be off a dollar or two, that type of thing. Towards the end, based on the consistency of using the three percent and, and that's just my guess.
I, I can touch base with you after.
Okay.
On, but would it make sense then? Cause I know I, I've, I know that there's a lot of work that went into this, I'm not trying to cause frustration. No, seriously, I do want to apologize, I'm just trying to be able to explain it and I don't want to kick the can because it needs to happen, we're in the hole. Are there certain ones at the top and the bottom of this that we can just say flat out as the board, we're not suggesting? We're not looking at, we're obviously not going to look at the one year, rip it off like a Band-Aid. We're probably not going to do the ten percent for ten years, so what, what exactly do we want to boil it down to? Maybe that would help.
And I think with the, with the, when the questions are answered and, and everybody's comfortable with the information. with the information they receive, this chart is still an outline of what basically is going to have to occur to get to our goals of the 90 days. But you raise a good question for the board.
All right, board, questions in front of us. Does anybody want to see anything specific related to rates?
If I'm in the minority, that's okay, there's lots of other people here. So I said my piece, but if everybody else is comfortable, wants to move on, I'm fine with that. I just. Put that out there.
Well, remind me again, what were the three scenarios that we tasked staff to provide us for tonight? What were those three? I know the 10% was one.
25 and I think 30.
That's the bottom three.
Those are the bottom three. We included the 36 because eight years to get to your reserves is you're basically going to have to start over with another, not eight years, five, six, five, six, six, six. Years is a long time to get to your reserves. When you look at the the difference between, if you look at the example bill there, the difference between a 36% at $47.60 or $45.50, it's looking at a $2 difference to get you to your reserves about a year and a half earlier. So that's why we included the 36% also.
So this is really what we're looking at.
Yeah, the question stands, right? Mr. Ritz, is there one that you would like to see?
We're picking one.
Well, no, but is the one that you'd like to let's start with one. You got to start somewhere. And if not, then maybe we move forward looking at the model that was given and recommended.
The 30, you mean the 36? Yeah, I'm and that's the one I believe that Commissioner Bowman-Palat's going to be sharing with staff that looked like there was a discrepancy in outlying years, correct?
So how? So how about this?
For the board's consideration.
Staff, I would propose this perhaps. Why do we not reserve? Let's reserve the opportunity for a workshop in the next 10 days. That satisfy the board's concern if there is a need for the workshop? And that way this gives Commissioner Bowman-Palat the opportunity to meet with staff and sit down and move through the permutations. And from that point, we would expect to hear from staff a recommendation that a workshop would be best or a workshop might not be necessary. That way you're not in communication with the group for group decision, and we have transparency and we have staff available to review the calculations. Would that satisfy your concerns? Okay, so I turn to the rest of the board. So one more time, it's going to be Commissioner Bowman-Palat's going to meet with staff. They're going to review her process of calculations, and we're going to compare and contrast that to the process of calculations for what we see in front of us. We're going to see that end result. And if there's a need, a workshop would be scheduled for some time in the next 10 days if there's a need, and we would hear that from staff, not from Commissioner Bowman-Palat. Does that satisfy the board? Mr. Sweeney, is that okay by you? Mr. Davis, you good with that?
Yes, does that still help staff with the?
Yeah, that's the next one.
Announcement.
Right, that's the only problem is unless you give me direction tonight and you don't have a workshop, I don't know what to advertise.
What if what if we said if we're not necessarily not necessary to have a workshop? And Commissioner Bowman-Palat is happy with the figures, we can give you the direction to go with the 36% five year. If you're not.
Tonight.
Yes, then if you're not, then we will meet. And come on, how about that?
So a contingency in there, will that give staff enough direction?
Yes.
Okay, so let's make sure we have consensus on that modification.
State that again.
Okay. Commissioner Bowman-Palat is going to meet with staff, they're going to review calculations on their end and on her end. Okay, two outcomes. One outcome would be she wants a workshop, so we can look at the bigger picture and show that there was a discrepancy. Or we, at this point, advise staff with a consensus to move forward on, what do we say, 36%?
36% five year 30.
With the five year 36% plan. So that way, if there is no issue and no need for a workshop, the board has spoken, the staff has a direction.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does.
I don't mean to be too.
No. That's okay. What I needed.
All right, you. Do we have clarity?
Right, that way we're going to get the numbers that we want. So if they're there, then we can.
You know, and I.
Back or we can go.
And I just wanted to add on paper, the staff recommendation of 36% makes the most sense because it was like right in the middle, like everything lined up. So I mean, you know, it it looks good, but if there's a little bit of confusion yet, I just.
Commissioner.
So we actually just talked about, I think Cole's.
Commissioner Rich.
Might have it figured out.
I think what might might be occurring is because you're locked into a year by year total increase and you're picking, say, 36% over 30%.
Okay.
Maybe at a certain point, because the 30% goes in additional year. When you're in that additional year, maybe your water bill is a little bit higher than when you stop the prior year for 36%. Because in this chart, you're locked into a situation where the percentage is locked in year by year by year. If you did this chart exactly to get to the point you want to, it would be broken down into like five years and three months or six years and four months. So I think when the numbers are put in, you might end up with a scenario where the lower percentage actually gives you a little bit higher water rate at the end of the process because you're pushing it another year.
A full year, which.
The percentages, the percentages end up making that occur. Shouldn't be that big, it shouldn't should be a slight difference, but it may be a difference.
Yeah, and that that very difference is why we on paper, looking at this 30, it's 6% additional, 36% to me. Yes, it's a little bit higher, but in the long run, I think it would be the most beneficial for everybody.
Okay.
I wish you would have said that an hour ago.
But 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 there's still confusion, so so I wanted.
But I believe that's what it is, if that makes a little bit of sense.
And we'll verify that.
So so what he's trying to say is so maybe the 36% at year six, you're meeting it at year five and three quarters, and at the 30%, maybe you're meeting it at year seven or year six and three quarters. So but you're getting a full year.
But you're locked into that rate for the whole year, just for simplicity and changing the rates on a year to year basis.
Okay, but we'll have to look at the numbers.
And and we're actually going to call FY24 year one now, though, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So so for all intents and purposes, 36% is actually going to go out up to FY30.
Yes, thanks.
So what I see came out of this is probably really good, because if we have a few questions and and concerns, we know at the public hearing, there's going to be questions and concerns, and we'll be a step ahead and hopefully.
Exactly.
Take some of that away. So I think this is a very good discussion while everybody, some people might be a little frustrated or whatever, but I think this is a good thing.
It's just been a long road for us.
Sure, and you're and we're close. And you're close, and you got to understand that we got 3,000 people ready to take our heads off too. So.
Oh, I know, I don't, I just present the information and and we try to look at it all angles, and we don't always look at it at every angle, but we've tried to put a good package together for you guys, as much information.
Do you have a consent? Do you have?
I'm good.
Direction from the consensus? Terrific, okay.
Hey, can I just say one weird weird question has nothing to do with the rate, well, because with the rates, but not the not the calculations.
No.
You mentioned, Mr. Table, you mentioned FEMA earlier. I know they're outside of town limits. Do we have some sort of arrangement with them or are they paying what like somebody in town limits would pay per their meters?
Right, all the.
They don't get a discount in any way. Okay.
No.
Because I know we lost daughters of cherry, they lost a lot of their population.
The usage has gone down for both facilities over the years.
Okay.
And that's there are two two biggest customers of water.
The good part is if everything goes through with Mount St. Mary's, the daughter should come back up and the and FEMA is bringing their class sizes back up.
And it all helps tremendously with.
So it all should should come back.
Actually, exactly.
Encourage you, we encourage that, yes.
With the population change, you'll see some benefits, but also we also, and this wasn't, I didn't hear it, so forgive me if it was. Technology's changed, so low flush toilets, low flow. Yeah, yeah, but but you know, you upgrade a facility, and that's what you have to do to make it more sustainable, so less consumption. All right, so with these things in mind, are we now able to move forward to setting the agenda for our next meeting? Staff, is that all right by you? Okay. Terrific. Bring it on, what do we have?
Obviously, I was going to put hold a public hearing, then consideration of ordinance 2023-05, which would increase water and sewer rates over a five year period. Number two, hold public hearing, then consideration of ordinance 2023-04, which would add allowable projection of fences over four feet high on corner lots for consideration. Number three, for consideration approval of Frederick County Sheriff's Office contract for fiscal year 24. Number four would be fiscal year 22 budget transfers to the capital projects fund for consideration. Consent agenda will be to accept Glenn Blanchard's resignation from the planning commission. Two administrative agenda items, first one for consideration proclamation declaring April 2023 child abuse prevention month. And number two for consideration proclamation declaring April 22nd, 2023 birthday in the town of Emmitsburg. And I believe Commissioner Bowman-Palat, did you have one more?
Oh, um, citizens advisory, I didn't know if we could make a change to, I lost it now. Essentially where it says in the code, I would just for consideration, right now, the code says of the ten members of citizens advisory, one would be outside town limits. And I didn't know if we could add or modify, keep one outside town limits, and one can be a business owner within town.
So that would be, let's see if I can get. So you would do for consideration for consideration ordinance 2023-06, which would amend chapter 2.80 the citizens advisory committee to allow, just leave it at that. And then we know it's to allow, I can put the language to allow one additional member outside of town, as long as they're a business owner in town. Is that what we said?
No, I think it says right now, the code is.
One member may reside outside of town limits.
Right.
So we want to add.
And one may be a business owner, so not necessarily lump them together. I mean, it doesn't have to be, but if there's available spots.
That's all I have. Cole just.
I'd like to show you all something real quick, and I see, I think I'll see exactly what you're talking about. On the 36%, the example of the 36% for the three quarter meter for 6,000 gallons. Sure, sure, sure. Grab your 36% and your 30% sheets if you have them. On the on the 36% at the end of at for fiscal year 29, the total bill is $302.66 for the the one on 30%, if you could go to that. For fiscal year 29, that ends up being a slightly higher at 30387. So right there, it shows you that the 30% is slightly higher than the 36% at the for fiscal year 29, but that's based on because you're pushing that 30% an additional year. And it's a dollar, it's a dollar difference between everything. But it's it's because you're locked in, you're locked into a chart that says, what's your percentage? We need an additional year at 30% to get to our goal. It just happens that it ends up being a dollar more at the end for fiscal year 29, based on the extension of time.
Right.
Kind of like a car payment, if you extend it, you you might end up, you end up paying more. But I think that's directly the what you were bringing up.
Yeah, I'll, um, let me touch base with you.
And you could probably do that with any starting point, if it's $10.
But again, it's probably user error, so I can just touch base with you after if you'd like.
Okay, sure.
Okay, so to work on the agenda piece, is there a motion to accept the proposed agenda for the April 3rd, 2023 meeting? Agenda plural as presented.
I've got one quick question, I'm sorry. Brookfield, did we come anywhere with that? We were tasked.
So the mayor and I and Julia met with Scott Fager right before I went on vacation over some different items. He was asking for for items from the town that will or would require board approval. I see that he sent me an email. It looks like last week to follow up with him on some things.
Okay.
So we're still working through it.
Okay.
So coming back to the question for the agenda.
So the agenda that was presented, I will make a motion to accept that as presented.
Very good, those there too, there's the consent and there's the meeting agenda.
I'll second.
Is that okay?
Oh, I just thought the consent went with that.
What happened?
So I'm saying we well, we got two agendas. We've got the consent agenda, we've got the meeting agenda. So I'm saying, is there a motion to accept the agenda, the the two of them as presented?
What's the consent agenda?
That's Mr. Blanchard, accepting Mr. Blanchard's resignation from his committee.
Okay, I just thought was.
It's all one big agenda.
So.
You can approve the whole agenda lump sum.
I was.
Mr. Ritz, run, I got it.
I second.
Okay.
Cool.
You're good. Okay, thank you, Mr. Sweeney. All right, so the motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz, it's been seconded by Commissioner Sweeney. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody against, please say nay. Motion carries five to zero, all in favor. Okay, any last items from the board? Sir? Oh, okay, very good. So anything else from the board or mayor or staff? Now, is there a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second to close the meeting?
Second.
Thank you, the motions made by Commissioner Ritz, seconded by Commissioner Bowman-Palat. The time is 8:49 PM. Good night.
Thank you.
Wait, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, now we.
Aye.
Five to zero, sorry.